Welcome. Thank you to the Albany City Council Work Session Monday, March 20, 2023 at 4:00 P. M. I'd like to call the meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Counselor Kupczynski.
Here.
Counselor Montague.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor McGee.
Present.
Counselor.
Here.
Counselor Newton.
I'm present and remote.
Mayor Johnson II.
Here. Next is Business from the Public. Did anyone sign up to speak to us this evening? Does anybody in the chambers like to speak to us this evening? Please join us. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, now is the time for public.
Yeah, now is the time for public discussion. Just tell us who you are when you come up, and then no address or anything like that. A bank account number would be good, though. That's all right, I'll time it.
All right. Well, I wish I had some context to speak into, but so anyway, I just found out today that we're going to be, you will be looking at the utility rates going forward. And so last time I was here was June 8th. Oh, yeah, my name is Joe Esker, E.S.K.E.R. I am a resident.
Thank you.
And the last time that I was here was June 8th, 2022, and I wanted to talk about the lack of a conservation, water conservation-based rate schedule. So you get a break in the current water rates, the more you use, and the higher rate is applied for the first units that residents uses, and I suppose for anybody else, too. So anyway, and so I was hoping that we were going to see some movement toward a restructuring of that, and possibly even looking at what are the fixed costs and marginal costs, and try to come up with something that really does provide a financial incentive for water conservation by residents and other users. And so I, from what I could tell when I went through the memo that was on today's agenda packet, I didn't see anything else with regard to an actual rate schedule, but it just seemed to be saying that there would be a 4% across-the-board increase for the next one-year cycle that I believe would begin in, let's see, July, or let's see which one it, maybe the water is what would start, would apply come January 1st. So I'm trying to do this all from memory of really, really running through the memo briefly just about an hour ago. So I thought that when we, after the June work session, that again, there was going to be some consideration of that, and I thought that perhaps that would even happen by the time we see the rates being voted on again. So I don't know if that, if there was a conversation in the city Public Works or not, but I would like to just support a look at the structure for the water rates and everything associated with that, so that we really do see some incentive for water conservation in the coming years, and so.
Thank you, sir. And so Director Beto will be speaking this afternoon. Please stick around so you can hear what she says.
Oh, I'll be here.
And we'll ask, we're going to be asking questions as well.
Super.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else in the chambers like to speak to the council? Thank you. Next up is Bird Rides Inc. update, T.J. Burkle, the verbal presentation.
And TJ will be speaking remotely, Mr. Mayor.
I think that's, we met you before, haven't we? Yes. You're muted, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. I prepared a few slides, if that's okay. Sorry, one moment.
Slideshow.
Slideshow, there we go. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council members. Appreciate you having me here today. Again, as mentioned, I'm T.J. Burkle. I'm with Bird and the shared mobility provider for the city. Just wanted to provide you a bit of an update after a year, last year operated, our first year in the city. Please feel free to jump in with any questions, or if you want to save them to the end, that's fine as well, but happy to be here and thank you again. So for, hold on, let me see, here we go, there we go. For anyone who's new either on the council or watching the meeting, I'll give a brief overview again. I'm sure many of you are aware of the program or have seen it operating in the city, but I'll give a brief overview on Bird and how the program works, and then some city-specific updates as well. So our mission is to make cities more livable by reducing car usage, traffic, and carbon emissions. We aim to provide a clean, alternative form of transportation, and we believe it's absolutely part of the future when it comes to transportation, infrastructure for cities. Just some big-picture overview numbers, Bird is currently in over 350 cities globally. We're on four continents. The industry's only about five years old, Bird is roughly about five years old, but we have surpassed 170 million rides, 75 million rides total, including in 2022, over 46 and a half million rides worldwide. Again, for those who don't know how it works, just a reminder, you download the app on your phone, there's a user agreement, and you have to verify that you are 18 years or older, you add your method of payment, complete a brief educational tutorial, and then, you don't have to do that every time, but from there, you scan the QR code on the scooter to unlock it, and off you go. And for those who haven't had a chance to take a ride, I would encourage you to do so. Unfortunately, Mr. Mayor, I don't have any bank account info included here today. Just some specific, Albany-specific information, the map to the right is sort of a heat map of everywhere we saw rides in 2022. In total, in 2022, we saw 12,655 rides. Average distance traveled over a mile and a half, 1.62 miles, for a total of almost 20,500 miles in year one. The average ride duration was 17 minutes. And again, our solution is electric, so clean energy, and metric tons of CO2 saved was just under three metric tons. And I think, you know, looking at a couple of these data points, both the average distance traveled and the average ride duration, you know, suggest that the scooters are being used for people as a transportation option. Certainly, you see tourists using them or people using them as sort of something, a fun outing, and that's great, too, we're all for that, but I think you also see people using them for commutes, people using them to get to different parts of town, and absolutely part of the solution when it comes to transportation. And last thing I would say, I mean, I think that, you know, micro-mobility in general, sort of the industry as a whole, not just Bird, is fairly unique when it comes to the relationship with the city as far as sort of traditional city procurement goes. We offer our service at no cost to the city, but really rely on cities to have a strong partnership and strong working relationship, so that we make sure we're meeting the city's needs and also running a program that's financially sustainable for us as well. And so I just wanted to hit on that. We have had a great, ongoing, working relationship with Mary and Peter and the whole crew at the city of Albany, and so we appreciate that partnership and appreciate our sort of ongoing communication and ability to work with the city. So with that, I hope that was okay in terms of length of time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions or wrap it up.
Thank you very much for your presentation, T.J. First counsel with a question is Counselor Montague.
I have two questions, if I'm allowed. First question was, is that user agreement per city, is that different depending on what city you ride the Bird in?
You mean when you first download the app?
Yes, or is that just standard Bird? Okay. And then the other question was, how does this data compare to other cities our size?
That is a good question, and I'd be happy to follow up with an answer on that. I don't have the data readily available, but I'd be happy to follow up with an answer on that.
Yeah, that would be interesting to me.
Counsel.
I'm curious about the same thing.
Okay.
Okay.
Counselor Kupczynski's next.
Yes, I volunteer down at our historic carousel on a regular basis during the timeframe that was running. I would go out on a fairly regular basis and challenge people that were very obviously not supposed to be riding it, like parents were putting their two- or three-year-old kids on the carousel, on it with them, riding it, and/or they were obviously underage, they were under 18, and some other instances, and I actually even sent photographs into your folks through your support staff showing how that was happening. And I guess my question is, how do I or we gracefully support or approach folks and say, you're not allowed to do that, and get off that thing when it's not our property and it's on public, they're using it on public property without endangering anybody?
Sure. No, that is totally fair, and it would be disingenuous of me to say that, you know, there will never be an issue with a scooter, whether it's underage riding or something else. We'd be happy to work with city staff. I think there are maybe some technological solutions. One thing we've done in other places is provide a message in the app to the rider, just a reminder that you have to be 18 years old or older to ride the scooters, and failure, you know, failure to follow that rule will result in, you know, being removed from the platform altogether. So we could certainly look at sort of like a technological solution that communicates directly to the rider, making sure they're aware of the, they should already know that from the tutorial from when they first download the app, but, you know, to your point, we know that, you know, people don't always follow that, and so there are certainly other options we can explore as well.
So how does a person who's starting up the app first time, how do they verify that they're 18?
Usually, it's a self-verification, self-certification.
Counselor, are you done, Counselor?
I'm done.
Counselor Novak.
Yeah, I think I might have mentioned this to the fellow from last year when these were first coming out in the spring. I have a business downtown, and sometimes in the evening, I would see kids, and I know they're kids, and 18-year-olds can be kids, too, but racing those scooters in the middle of the street at night and screaming and, you know, having a good time. So if I, if they're on their own, you know, it's on our system, it seems to me like that's definitely got a downside, because there are kids who will totally take advantage of that, and they do, and I've witnessed it, and I think it's a little scary, and I expect as the weather gets nicer that we'll see more of that again, because it happened last year, and I don't know how to police that, how to, you know, what do I say? Oh, I saw kids racing up and down the main drags here in town when I left the restaurant at nine or 10 or whatever, you know, and there's nothing to be done, really. I mean, it's not safe for them, it's not safe for cars that might be actually driving, and, but what do we do?
Mr. Mayor, may I point out that not all scooters in the city are Bird scooters, too? There are many that are private, and to operate a vehicle in unsafe manner is not okay, whoever owns the vehicle. So there are steps that, enforcement steps that we can take in terms of traffic, but I just wanted to point out that not all scooters are Bird scooters as well. And there's also irresponsible use of other vehicles, too.
Are you done, Counselor?
Yes.
Let me go her and then back to you.
Thank you. Did I read in the agreement with Bird that hours of operation end at 8:00 P. M.? Oh, it's at 10:00. Okay. Anyway, never mind that. My other question was, what, how does Albany's population stack up with the other cities that contract with you? Are we one of the smaller cities that have Bird scooters? Are we in the middle? Do you have a lot of cities in the 60,000 population range?
That's probably a bit closer to the smaller end, but I mean, we've operated in, I mean, we operate in cities as large as New York and Los Angeles, and we've operated in cities with populations below 10,000 people. But I mean, I would say, on average, you know, 60,000-ish people is probably closer to the smaller end of the types of cities we operate in, but, you know, we've seen great ridership, just based on last year, and we're excited, you know, hopefully to launch again in 2023.
Thank you.
One last question, are you using the same contractor that we've had this past year, or has that changed, or do we, do you know yet?
We are planning to use the same fleet manager, which is a small, family-owned business that, you know, lives and works in Albany, yes.
Thank you.
Counselor McGee, do you have a question? Anyone else over here? I do have a couple of questions. One thing you did not show in your report is anything regarding accidents or injuries related to the Bird scooters, any events like that? Is there any thefts have been reported over the 2022 year? And I believe one mechanism you can do as far as a safeguard is have a person put in their driver's license number.
With, you know, with regard to the first question, you know, there was not, there were no sort of major incidents, I'm not aware of any theft in the year of 2022, so it, you know, relatively, we got really strong feedback from the program and from the community. Again, it would be disingenuous of me to say that you're never going to have issues, you know, as was pointed out, whether it's with Bird or other scooters, but year one ran very smoothly for us. And then as far as, you know, driver's license numbers, there are some privacy-related issues, I can certainly take that back to our team, but want to be mindful of individual privacy issues as well.
Okay. So next up is Counselor Steph Newton, she's remote. Counselor Newton?
Yeah, thanks so much for recognizing me, Mayor Johnson. My question was in regards to, so I was reading TechCrunch several months ago, and I know that Bird Scooters was contemplating, you know, bankruptcy or discontinuing business altogether due to, you know, I think some overstatement of revenues with what money folks have put in there in the wallet, never using the app. I was curious how this would affect the agreement with the city of Albany.
So at no point were we contemplating bankruptcy or discontinuing operations. I will say, you know, the company's five years old, the industry's five years old, and so we have continued to evolve, the industry continues to evolve, and, you know, in order for us to continue providing this solution, which is, you know, taking millions of cars off the road, we have to get to a place where it is financially sustainable for us to do so. And so one thing that, you know, we focused on in 2022 was that path to profitability. And so we did exit a handful of markets, so you did, I'm guessing you probably saw that in TechCrunch as well, but we're fully committed to Albany, and we're already, we've already got our fleet manager identified, as I mentioned, and our vehicles allocated for 2023, and we're excited to continue operating in the city this year and hopefully for many years to come.
Awesome, thanks for the clarification.
So one thing I would like, next time we do something like this, is to have the local fleet manager present, so we can all meet that person, because I know, I know the person, I know Counselor Kupczynski knows them, but I don't know if anyone else here knows them as well. Go ahead, Counselor Novak.
Yeah, thank you, because I just thought of another question. I saw the average ride in Albany was 1.62 miles, and you talk about, you know, the purpose of this is, one of the purposes and goals is to take more cars out, people aren't, so that cars aren't on the road, not as many cars. Okay, well, if it's an average of 1.62 miles, how do you track less cars? How do you, do you have any data on that that shows that taking a short ride from point A to point B, someone's leaving their car at home and using a scooter? I mean, how do you qualify and quantify that?
Sure, we have a formula that we use that's basically, I want to say it's about a third of total rides, what we factor in is about a third of total rides replaces a car trip. So it's not, it's not every ride, we understand that, you know, we can't claim that every scooter ride is replacing a car trip, and I, to be candid with you, I don't know everything that's gone into that formula and identifying that number exactly, but that's where that comes from.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, I'm, I'm sure there's no more questions. Thank you very much for coming this evening.
Thank you all, and I will follow up with the one or two items that were promised here.
Thanks. Next on tonight's agenda is Public Works. Utility rate presentation by Director Bailey, pages 2 to 13 of your packet, and she also handed out a PowerPoint presentation for us as well. Director Bailey, good afternoon.
Hello. Just take me a second to share my screen.
Take your time.
Because I'm old. Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I did hand out a paper version of the slides for those of you here, sorry, Counselor Newton, in case you want to take notes as we go along. You'll notice it's a hefty packet, I have a lot of slides to get to, and I'll try to go as quickly as I can, but especially since we have some new members, if you have questions, please ask along the way. And before I get into my spiel, I'll just discuss the public comment about conservation rates. So we do need to develop a different rate structure for drinking water. It's complicated, and there are lots of reasons, not just that it will help ensure conservation of a vital resource, but also the state is going to require us to do that. That discussion and work will happen after we finish our Water Master Plan update, which is ongoing right now. The Water Master Plan is a huge undertaking that defines the needs for the water system over the next 20 years. We anticipate having that done by the end of this calendar year. As we wrap that up, we will start what's called the Water Financial Plan, so we'll develop a financial plan for the water utility, and part of that work will be assessing the rate structure, because the rates for residential customers in particular will have to essentially flip, and we want to make sure that we're doing that in an equitable way, so that we're not, you know, really hammering any particular class of customers. There's a lot that goes into that, and we'll be talking more with the council about that as that gets closer. So that work is planned, but it's not part of what I'm discussing tonight. This is the existing rate structure, which is not conservation-based in any sense. Okay. All right. So this presentation is an annual presentation we do on the three water utilities in Public Works. I'm going to call them the water utilities, and they are wastewater, drinking water, and stormwater, all of which are water, so I just call them water utilities. When I say that, I'm talking about all three together, not just drinking water. The presentation is broken into three main sections. First, I'm going to give you an overview of what the revenue pays for from the water rates, then I'm going to show you how our revenue is or is not keeping pace with our targets, and then we'll look at rate projections for the next five years. This is a long presentation, so I'm sorry, but it's probably the most important thing that we talk about with council from the Public Works Department. Okay, so first, where does the money go? I've discussed this with you a few times, but updating utility rates is the end result of the council's action and direction to us. The council deliberates and establishes a level of service that they want to achieve in each utility, and then we go off and do research and work to accomplish that level of service within the funding that's available. When the funding is not adequate to reach or maintain the desired level of service, we'll come back and discuss that with the council and figure out what to do moving forward. So today's recommendation on rates is the department's presentation to you of what we think we need in order to continue the level of service that you've described for us through the strategic plan and other sources. In the water utilities, revenue goes to one of three categories of expenditures. Our first obligation is that we pay our debts, so we first allocate funds toward debt payment. Next, we have to keep our existing systems working and functional, so the second thing we allocate funding for is operations and maintenance, and then whatever money we have left, we put into the capital programs. It's important to remember that if we find ourselves without enough funding to meet our capital needs, then we either have to find more funding or do less work. You can't defer capital investment very long in water utilities without significant risk to public health and safety, so we don't like to defer capital investment, but sometimes that's where we find ourselves. So first, I'll talk about debt. We try to accomplish our work without taking on debt, but sometimes the needs are beyond our ability to pay for them as we go. Anytime we have a need that exceeds our ability to pay, we attempt to find the least-cost solution. Sometimes we can break large capital projects into phases, but we can only do that with projects that actually can be phased, and when we have enough time to accomplish the full project before calamity striking. An example of that would be the Cox Creek Interceptor project, which is a replacement and extension of a very large sanitary sewer main. We broke that into five phases that will probably take at least 10 years to accomplish, and we're currently constructing Phase Two right now. When we can't find a solution that allows us to get our work done within our own means, we work with the finance department and find our best options. For those projects, we either have issued bonds or applied for low-interest loans through one of the state revolving loan funds. We currently have three sources of debt in the water utilities. In the sewer fund, we have two loans. First is a loan that was taken out to fund the construction of the Albany-Millersburg Water Reclamation Facility and Talking Water Gardens. This loan was refinanced a few years ago to take advantage of improved rates. Our current annual payment is about $4.6 million, and that loan will be paid off in 2032. Also in the sewer fund, we have another clean water SRF loan that we recently took out to construct improvements on the Riverfront Interceptor, including the new lift station on Water Avenue. That project was completed in 2021. The annual debt payment for that is a little over $600,000, and that will be paid off in 2041. In the water fund, drinking water fund, we have an existing debt that was taken out to construct the Albany-Millersburg Water Treatment Plant and associated facilities. The annual payment for that is $1.92 million, and it will be paid off in 2034. Once our payments for debt are considered, our next obligation is to pay for operations and maintenance. O&amp;M includes personnel, materials, capital maintenance, and regulatory requirements. Timely and sufficient investment in O&amp;M needs can save money in the long run by reducing risk of system can save money in the long run by reducing risk of system failures, emergency repairs, or regulatory issues. Because O and M is such a large user of the revenue, I'm going to go into some detail on O and M for each of the three utilities next. We'll start with sanitary sewer. All of the wastewater generated by our residential, industrial, and commercial customers travels through a network of pipes and lift stations to one point, the Albany Water Reclamation Facility. This is the single point of treatment for all of the wastewater from Albany and Millersburg. In addition to the WRF, we have thousands of pieces of infrastructure that we have to maintain all year long, including over 200 miles of pipe and almost 19,000 connections to the system. In the last fiscal year, the WRF treated over 3 billion gallons of wastewater before returning three, clean water back to the Willamette River. We've implemented a series of energy management projects that are saving us tens of thousands of dollars every year, and we logged over 42,000 visitors at Talking Water Gardens. I want to talk a little bit about industrial pretreatment. This is a little-known program that we're required to have as part of our MPDES discharge permit for the wastewater system. The industrial pretreatment program is required to inspect and manage discharges from certain categories of industrial facilities. In Albany, we have eight that are classified as significant industrial users, eight that are classified as categorical industrial users, and four non-dischar, non-discharging categorical industrial users. All of these have to be inspected and permitted by this program every year. This program ensures that industrial wastewater that might contaminate or impact the wastewater collection system, the treatment process, or the river are kept out of our system. It's a critical part of our permit, and almost nobody knows about it, so I'd like to highlight it. In the collection system, last year, we cleaned 31 miles of pipe and inspected 33 miles. It's very common for tree roots to penetrate sewer pipes where there are a lot of trees, and we have to remove those roots with special techniques, otherwise they will create a blockage and a sewer overflow. Last year, we removed roots from over two miles of pipe, and we also responded to over 4,500 requests for service or line locates. Of those, almost all of them were line locates. These are the underground infrastructure lines before you dig, you know, call before you dig program. We only had 58 calls for service for the wastewater collection system last year, which is amazing considering we have 200 miles of pipe and anything can go wrong at any time. That low number of calls for service is a direct result of our investment in our sanitary sewer system. So photos, on the left is major repairs that were done to the clarifiers at the WRF. That little orange dot that's kind of in the middle is a person, so it gives you the sense of the size of these facilities. We also are doing a lot of sampling right now. We're in the middle of permit renewal for our wastewater discharge permit, which is a huge process, and this is some samples we're required to take from the bridge of the Willamette River. We've already spent over $70,000 just in sampling costs for the permit renewal, and we're not done yet. We're also maintaining the wetlands, which are beautiful, and as the seasons change, I encourage you to go out and take advantage of the wetlands. And then finally, at the bottom, we're making compost, and this is a picture of our crews loading up some compost for the Parks Department to be used in the city. In the drinking water system, again, a number of assets. In this system, we have two treatment plants, which is unusual for a city of our size and offers us nice redundancy on treatment. And then, of course, we have thousands of assets, including 21,000 service connections. We have an 18-mile-long canal that brings water to the Vine Street Water Treatment Plant. Last year, they cut brush along 15 miles of canal bank. And at the treatment plants, we produced 2.65 billion gallons of water last year. In the distribution system, they did a lot of maintenance, but what I want to highlight is the 7,290 lines that were inspected for the lead and copper rule. So this is an example of an increasingly stringent regulation from the federal government. There's been a lead and copper rule for a long time, that requires drinking water utilities to sample for lead, and when you have lead, you have to take certain actions to try to decrease the presence of lead in your customer's water. That rule was strengthened last year, and one of the things we have to do is inspect every single line that may have been constructed with lead during this time period when lead was very common to be used in waterline construction. We did that last year, inspected over 7,000 lines, which is a very aggressive approach to the rule. We found no lead components in any of those lines, which is not surprising. The lead rule is mostly written for communities on the East Coast and in the Midwest, where it's very common to use lead in their drinking water system. It's much less common on the West Coast. Several years ago, lead was an issue, and we did a lot of work then as well, and we feel very confident that there's virtually no lead in the public system. There may be some lead components in private plumbing, and we'll have to suss that out as we work through the, the rest of the rule requirements. But this is a huge level of effort, and we're way far ahead of our comparators in terms of implementation of this law. More pictures, there are always some good pictures in drinking water. So the canal is subject to bank failure. This was a few years ago, so we don't have this type of failure going on right now, but all of those trees were removed, and we had to reconstruct the bank. There's always the hydrant picture, this is very unusual when a car strikes a hydrant. It should not form a geyser. They're constructed and installed so that they should break away and not create this type of situation, but this one broke at just the wrong place, and it's just a very dramatic picture. Looks like Hollywood. And then, of course, we have maintenance workers up to their eyeballs in water and brush removal, removal on the canal. And the bottom right-hand picture is some of our treatment operators doing a membrane replacement project at the Albany-Millersburg Plant. Okay, stormwater. Let's see, where am I? Okay, last but not least, stormwater. So the storm system has all of the ditches, culverts, underground storm mains, manholes, water quality facilities, and outfall pipes in the entire city. We have, again, thousands of individual pieces of infrastructure that we have to maintain, but we only began collecting revenue to actually maintain this system in 2017, even though some parts of it have been in the ground for well over 50 years. There's never been, until recently, dedicated funding to maintain this system. The picture on this slide is of a stormwater quality facility, which is a vegetated facility, and these are increasingly built as part of the new stormwater regulations, and they provide a small amount of treatment through filtration of sediment and perhaps some infiltration if the soils are right, and are increasingly common across the city. I mentioned those specifically to show you this slide. We now have almost 370 public stormwater quality facilities. Those are roadside infiltration planners, like I just showed you, but they could also be larger, more regional or neighborhood-sized stormwater facilities. There are also almost 360 private stormwater quality facilities in town that are owned by private entities such as commercial facilities or homeowner associations. The city has to provide all of the maintenance and inspection on the city-owned facilities, but we also are required to ensure that the maintenance takes place on the private facilities. So we have maintenance agreements with all of those entities, and we have to ensure that those maintenance agreements are followed. This represents a huge amount of work, and one of the reasons why the O and M costs for stormwater continue to increase. We continue to do the inspection and rating of the stormwater piped infrastructure. We're up to 89% of the city has now been rated. We also have inspected hundreds of manholes. And let's see. Oh, illicit discharge. So on the slide, it says, last year, we investigated 30 potential illicit discharge events. An illicit discharge is the introduction of anything into the stormwater system other than precipitation. It can be an intentional dumping of a substance, it can be a spill or an accident. But I want to point out that in particular, last year, we dealt with three major instances of oil pollution in drainage ways, and one instance of chemical dumping on the city's right-of-way, all of which required a lot of city time and effort. The city paid for the cleanup, I think, of all of those, and is trying to recoup those costs, but thousands and thousands of dollars that we're on the hook for because we have to keep the storm system clean. We try to recover those costs from the responsible parties. Sometimes it's difficult, and we often have to get law enforcement involved. Photos, so the one on the left is a major spill on the Ellsworth Street Bridge. We're required to keep spills from entering waters of the state and the stormwater system. So that, I like that picture because it was just huge and catastrophic. Took a lot of time to try to clean up. The center picture shows a chunk of concrete, that's a foot right down there next to that chunk of concrete, that was removed from a stormpipe, that was completely plugging the stormpipe, and is an example of the type of debris we're finding in the storm system. It's not small, it's huge. And then on the right, this is a storm catch basin that, the lid is off, but there's so much sediment in there, you can still see the impression of the lid. That has to all be cleaned out and removed so that it doesn't travel to the river. Okay, so that wraps up the overview of the O and M portion, and now I'm going to talk about the third bucket of spending, which is capital spending. About 11 years ago, the staff discussed with the Council appropriate capital funding targets for water and sewer. And then recently, when we established a stormwater utility, we discussed a very small capital target in stormwater, $490,000 a year this year, which is intended to pay for the stormwater portion of major street projects. So what was happening, what has happened, is whenever a street is rebuilt, you almost always have to rebuild the storm infrastructure that's under that street, put in new pipes, new catch basins, et cetera. For years, the street fund was paying for that because there was no one else to pay for it. And as part of the establishment of the stormwater utility, the Council wanted Storm to pay for Storm. So we have an, in part of the rate that people pay is a very small capital charge that goes to pay for the stormwater portion of street construction projects. So that's it. So less than $500,000 a year capital funding for Storm, specifically for street projects, and then the other two capitals, targets for the, the two other utilities. So when we develop our rate revenue target, we look at our debt, and then we add on to our O and M costs, and then we add on this capital target, and we try to see, are we going to hit that? Are we going to recover enough money to pay for all three of those things? And like with everything else, costs continue to rise every year. So I'll talk a little bit about capital. So in sewer, the capital primarily goes to pay for routine pipe replacement projects, called perpetual life replacement projects, where we identify the worst pipes in the city. We have a running list, and then we fund replacement of the top, however many we can fund before we run out of money. These funds also have to pay for other capital projects, like the Cox Creek Interceptor. So while generally we're accomplishing what we want to accomplish in sewer, we do not have a whole lot of extra money. A couple of years ago, we wanted to start the Cox Creek Interceptor project, but we didn't have enough money to do that and the pipes, so we took a calculated risk to not replace pipes for one year and put all of our capital money into Cox Creek Interceptor project. Well, we won't be doing that again, because what happened is we had several failures of collection system pipes that were due to be replaced. So we are not at a point now where we can ignore the collection system and pay for these much larger projects. We have to keep going with our pipe replacement project. Of the sanitary sewer system, we have over 29 miles of pipe that are expected to fail within the next 10 years. So that's very expensive, and we can't ignore those. Here's a pie chart that shows the relative distribution of the condition of the pipes in the sanitary sewer system. So we use this, a nationally accredited, it's not accredited, a nationally approved system to assess the condition of sanitary sewer pipes. We put a camera down the pipe, and we have trained people who describe the condition of that pipe. Over time, we've made a lot of improvements in the condition of our pipes since we've done this dedicated capital investment over the last 10 years. The red part of the pie chart has the group of five, pipes rated five, those are the worst. And that slice of the pie has gotten smaller, but the slice of the pie for the fours has gotten bigger. So we're doing, we're making progress, but we're still not out of the woods yet. This is another way of looking at the investment we've made in pipes. So when we started this back in 2013, we had almost 90,000 linear feet of pipe rated five or above, and we've invested so much so well over time that we're down to just a little over 40,000 linear feet of pipe. So really good improvement over time. Okay, on to drinking water. In drinking water, we have a $2.9 million annual target for capital, and the way we can see that we're making progress there is by the percent of water loss. So percent water loss measures how much water we produce at the treatment plants versus how much we're selling to our customers. Their water loss can happen from theft, which is a very small percentage, less than 1%, or it could be something like firefighting, which sometimes is big, but thankfully, not really big in most years. The largest way you lose water is through leaks in your pipes. When we first started this, years and years ago, we had over 30% water loss, meaning 30% of the water we made was lost to leaks. We're down to around 9%, which is extremely good. 10% is considered best practice in the industry. So in addition to the pipe replacement in the distribution system, we're also saving money annually for membrane replacement at the AM Water Treatment Plant, which has to happen every 10 to 12 years. In stormwater, we don't really have any money budgeted for big capital projects, as I mentioned. Capital maintenance in the storm system is done on a reactive basis, so whenever something fails or there's an emergency, we go and fix it. The stormwater master plan was completed and presented to the Council last year and identified needs in the system for growth and to expand capacity. However, we did not, haven't come to the Council yet for a stormwater SDC, system development charge, we'll be coming to the Council to talk about that later on this year. The current stormwater rate is still building to the target revenue for O and M and regulatory, which we anticipate reaching after the rate increase we're discussing today. So that means that next year, when we come back to talk about this, we'll probably be bringing to you a stormwater rate that includes a dedicated capital target to start addressing some of the needs in the stormwater system. So we're not doing capital pipe replacement projects, but we're doing a lot of work in the storm system. We've assessed 89% of the system and identified 15 miles that are at risk of failure within the next 10 years. We also have huge root and debris problems that have to be maintained. So pipe cleaning and root removal is an ongoing activity. It's important to note that stormwater pipes are quite different from sanitary sewer pipes. They're al, almost always significantly larger, and they are, as I mentioned, not regularly maintained. So the pipes that are in the ground, the worst stormwater pipe is really, really bad, way worse than the worst sanitary sewer pipe, and we need to get a capital charge in place so we can start replacing some of these completely failed pipes. A similar pie chart for Storm. We have a significant amount of the system that's in good shape, but again, we need to start making some progress on those 15 miles that are likely to fail. Those 15 miles that are likely to fail represent somewhere around $40 million of needed investment just to repair the ones that are expected to fail in the next 10 years. And of course, we don't have any dedicated capital funding for that. Okay, so that's where all the money goes. So now we're going to talk about, are we on track? How are we doing with our collection of revenue? So every year, we look at our three funds as compared to our revenue and expenditure targets, and we analyze where we are and what, if any, rate increase we need to stay on target. So there are three reasons why we might need to raise rates. Number one is inflation. Inflation affects both operating and capital costs, and as we've seen, has been a little bit crazy the last year. Next, we have regulatory compliance, which also affects our expenses. I talked a little bit about that already with stormwater and drinking water, but also you might have heard in last week's news, the EPA is going to issue a new rule requiring us to sample for PFAS in drinking water. PFAS are the forever chemicals. And we don't, we've done some sampling already. We don't have PFAS in our finished drinking water, but we still have to sample and report on it monthly. And each PFAS sample, last I checked, was $1,200. So PFAS, P-F-A-S, per fluorinated alkalene substances. I'm going to say that's what it stands for. What's that?
$1,200, you said $1,200.
$1,200 per sample. And we have, we're going, that rule is expected to be issued this year. So regulatory requirements in water are just, they just keep going. And then finally, we have capital projects, which I just talked about quite a bit. So here's the takeaway that everyone wants to know. What we're recommending, based on what our revenue projections and expenditure projections for next year, is a 3% increase in sewer rates, which will be effective July 1st, and that responds to inflation pretty much primarily. A 4% increase for drinking water, that would go into effect January 1st, 2024, again, inflationary response. And then 17% increase in stormwater, which will be in effect next March 1st, so almost a year from now. That's inflation, but it also continues us on our track to raise rates and raise revenue to pay for regulatory work and the street fund capital release. I'll say 17%, I say it every year, is a large percentage, but because the stormwater rate is small, it doesn't work out to as large of a dollar increase, which I'll show you in just a second. So what would people pay? Customers formerly known as single-family residential customers, now single-dwelling unit customers, that use eight units of water or 800 cubic feet per month. And the sanitary sewer increase would be about six cents per day or $2 a month. Drinking water increase would be about seven cents per day or another roughly $2 per month. And stormwater increase would be seven cents and a little over $2 a month, bringing up to $16.31 per month. I'll say that we use 800 cubic feet as a typical customer. That's because that's what the state agencies use for comparison, but most Albany customers on average are using six units of water a month or 600 cubic feet. And of course, the less water you use, the lower your drinking water and storm and sanitary sewer rate would be. When you add those together, the utility bill would go up about 20 cents a day, about $7 a month to $144.31 a month. This slide shows all three rate increases in effect at the same time, but it's important to note that they go into effect at different times, so all three rate increases won't be in effect until next March 1st. This represents a combined increase of 4.8% over the current amount residential customers are typically paying. This chart shows that same amount plus the city services fee. So previous councils have asked to know the total impact to water, to Albany customers from all fees. So we add in the city services fee here to show what that looks like. I'll want to point out that our drinking water programs receive no money from the city services fee, so we're not receiving any of that money, but it does appear on the utility bill, and the council was interested in seeing the total bill. So that's what it looks like. In previous years, council asked for this comparison with other jurisdictions, so we're showing this again. We've highlighted our nearest neighbors. Albany is on the list at number six, which is where we are currently. And I'll just point out that this compares Albany with all three of these rate increases in place versus everybody else with their current rates. So we're, it's a little bit of a misrepresentation because by this time next year, I'm sure most, if not all, of these jurisdictions will also have raised their rates.
City services fee is not, probably not included in this, is it?
It includes all of the fees on City of Corvallis, and they actually jumped, they used to be down around 20 or so on this list, and they've jumped up to 12 because they just raised a bunch of their fees.
Okay, thank you.
This table shows non-residential customers. For those of you that are not familiar with our rate structure, we charge different rates for residential versus commercial or industrial customers. And within the commercial and industrial classes, they're further broken down into categories such as low, medium, or high-strength sewer customers, for instance. So it's very difficult to say what would be the effect on any particular business. So what we have here is just a random sample of some typical businesses in Albany and what the rates would look like as compared to other cities. Okay, almost done. Now we're going to talk about what, we've talked about where we were, where we are, and now we're going to look at where we think we're going. So five-year rate forecasts. In Public Works, we maintain a five-year forecast for all of our utilities. We use that information to plan future work in operations and capital, and also to forecast rates into the future. Forecasting is not an exact science, and this is a list of some of the variables that can affect our revenue either up or down. So while we're making our best educated guess, just know that this forecasting is never an exact science. I'll start again with sewer, and this is looking back at rate revenues from this year and then looking back a few years. So the sewer revenue is generally trending up. You can't see it on this graph, but off on the right, on the left-hand side, in fiscal year 1718, we had a 6% sewer rate decrease when the stormwater rate began. So we have lowered rates in the recent past as well. This chart shows sewer SDC revenue over the same time period. SDC revenue is highly variable. It depends on the rate and type of development, which makes it really hard to predict. And please note the giant increase in fiscal year '22 in sewer SDC revenue, and that's going to play a factor on this chart. So I'm going to take a minute to explain this chart because it's unique to the sewer fund and it's a little complicated. What this chart is showing is at the top, the dotted line, is the total debt service payment in the sewer fund. So way, way back at the beginning, I talked about debt payment as our first obligation. So we have almost $5 million in debt payment due. The next line, the dash-dot line, is the amount of debt payment that sewer rates are paying. And so it goes up and down, as you can see on this chart. The third line, the dash-line, is the portion of the debt payment that SDCs are supposed to pay. And the bottom line, which is the solid line, is the portion that SDCs are actually paying. Okay, so when the debt for the water reclamation facility was taken out, a portion of it was assigned to rates and a portion of it was assigned to SDCs because the facility was built not just for current use but for future use. So the future use portion of the facility was supposed to be paid for out of SDC revenue, not rate revenue. But over time, SDC revenue has not been received in an amount that was able to keep up with that fair share of the payment. Years ago, we had a reserve of SDC revenue in the sewer fund that we used to pay for debt, along with SDC receipts as they came in, but those reserves are gone. So moving forward, SDC revenue is not forecast to be received in quantities that can fully pay its share of debt, so there's a gap, which next year, we're forecasting will be about $400,000. In the current year and last year, the gap was wider, but since we received so much SDC revenue in fiscal year '22 that you saw on the last slide, we're able to target more SDC money towards this debt payment, so the gap is a little bit narrower, but still SDCs are not paying their fair share. What that means, because the debt has to be paid, is that the less that SDCs can pay, the more that rates have to pay. So rates have to be raised more than they would otherwise need to be raised in order to pay for part of SDC's share of debt. Any questions on this chart? Because it's kind of confusing, but I want to make sure that's clear before we go. Okay? All right, so continuing on. So here's, looking out in the future, five years for sewer rates. So next year, as I mentioned, we're requesting a 3% rate increase. And then in order to meet our targets in the out year, we're forecasting 4%. Those are conservative forecasts and likely to be changed. Last year, at this time, we thought we would need 3.5% in sewer this year, but we have worked that down to 3%, so a little bit better than we thought we would be. In the water fund, this shows the last five years of water rate revenue, which generally is increasing. And then the last five years of SDC revenue, again, not very predictable, but in the water fund, SDC revenue has been able to keep with its assigned share of the debt payment in water. So we don't have the same problem in water as we have in sewer. And then this shows the forecast, the last few years of rate, rate increases, and then what we think moving out. So 4% we're requesting for next fiscal year and then 5% in the out years, but again, we'll be back every year to talk about that, and that's a conservative estimate. Almost done. In stormwater, revenue has been steadily increasing year over year. This was all part of a plan with the council, and I'll show you the next slide, which the line looks remarkably similar to the revenue chart, and that's by design. In 2018, we showed this chart to the council, and they approved the 17% per year for five-year rate increase in sewer, in order to get us to a place where we could pay for all of the O and M requirements, plus that little bit for the street work. The rate increase we're discussing today would be the fifth of the five years that the council approved in 2018. So next year, when we come back, we'll have another more robust discussion on stormwater than the other two utilities, because we're going to go back and crunch the numbers again and really figure out how much we need in stormwater now that our first five-year period is done. So in this chart, we show the 17% increase we're requesting for next fiscal year, and then that drops to 12%. That 12% is really a placeholder. We don't really know how much that's going to be until we do quite a bit of work, which we'll be talking about with the council, probably over next winter months. Okay, last slide. So just to summarize, we're requesting a 3% increase in sewer rates, which would be effective July 1st, 4% increase in water, which would be effective January 1st, and 17% for stormwater, effective next March 1st, for a total weighted increase of 4.8%. I'm happy to take whatever questions you might have.
Yes, Director Bailey, can you switch? Go back to page, slide 26, your stormwater pipe condition assessment.
Sorry? This one?
Okay, yes, I was intrigued by that unknown, not surveyed. If it's unknown, meaning you just don't know where it is or what it is, or how is that?
No, that, that means that the condition is unknown. So we've only inspected and assessed 89% of the system, so we have 11% left to go to get pipe condition assessment data on.
Which implies, or I'm inferring, that that means, any of that could be, there could be fours or fives in some of those.
Sure, yeah. I mean, if you extrapolate out, we have, oh gosh, what, 15 miles out of 130 miles are in this four and five category, so, you know, we might add a few more miles in that. It's unlikely that they're all terrible, but probably some of them are.
Okay, thank you.
I have four questions. Going clear back to the beginning with the discussion of the wastewater system, define for me non-discharging categorical industrial users.
Oh, I'm so happy that I know this. So I'll start with a categorical industrial user. So a CIU is an industry that produces in its wastewater certain types of constituents that are categorized in federal law, and they're especially bad, usually especially bad. That, they trigger in the law, certain specific thing, treatment processes that have to be done to remove them. Non-discharging categorical industries have those same constituents, but they aren't actually discharging to our system. For instance, in Millersburg, the Georgia Pacific Resin Facility is not connected to the sanitary sewer for their industry, but they're still on our list, and they get inspected because if they surreptitiously did connect to our wastewater system, that would be very, very bad for us. So we, the non-discharging industries are inspected to make sure that they really are non-discharging, and they are of such a type that if they did discharge, we would have to permit them and regulate them like we did the others that do, that are connected. So some of these industries, for instance, might have their restrooms plumbed, but not their industrial process plumbed, and they manage that waste in a different way. That's a non-discharging categorical industry.
Thank you. Question number two, the new compost. Parks uses it for, I'm guessing, application and making things grow in the parks.
Yes.
Is it approved for food production?
It can be used anywhere. It's considered a Class A bio solids, which is a classification in the federal EPA rules. This, I flipped to this picture because this is a picture of one of our stormwater quality facilities where we applied the compost. So that's compost, which is top dressing that facility. So it's been treated and tested so that it can be approved to be used in gardens or your rose bushes or wherever you might want to do it. It's, our former bio solids were Class B.
Right.
Which could not be used on food-producing crops. These are Class A, which can be.
That's why I asked the question. I was, I know the difference between A and B, and thank you, that's a nice improvement. Question number three, define really, really bad stormpipes.
Well.
I know that's a technical term.
It is. I didn't have time to do this calculation, but in previous presentations, we've had a metric that said that the worst stormwater pipe is 11 times worse than the worst wastewater pipe in the rating system. So the rating system is five is bad. It's a four-digit, it's a four-character system because the next four digits, you can go, it goes from 5,000 to 5ZZZ. And so you go zero through nine, A through Z, in each place. So we have some pipes in the storm system that are Z-pipes. They're just completely trashed and need to be replaced, and we don't have the money to do it.
Thank you. Those are holes in the ground with no structure around them any longer.
Yeah, and it's, in addition to, they're going to fail and cause, you know, sinkholes. We have that happen sometimes around. is terrible for the road, but also not so great for the river. So we need to get them fixed. We don't have the money to do that.
Final question on stormwater system, how many staff are dedicated to working on the stormwater?
We have one FTE in our stormwater maintenance program. We are adding, proposing to add another FTE in the budget next year, but we do use contractors. So we have contract, like a landscaping-type company that will help with some of these vegetated facilities. That's with the stormwater quality facilities. The pipe system, our wastewater collections crew that normally works on the wastewater pipes is also responsible for the stormwater pipes. So when there's a problem with the pipe part of the system, then the wastewater collections crew goes and does that, and they charge back. If you calculate an average wage, I think they're up to like, they spend the equivalent of three or four FTE worth of time on the stormwater system from the wastewater system.
Thank you.
Counselor Novak. So with the regulatory requirements that are always increasing, like 14,400 just for those monthly tests, 14,400 a year, I'm just wondering if there's any way that we can get governmental infrastructure help for any of these things? It seems like there should be something available from the state or the federal government to help us out.
Well, there's no, as far as I know, there's no funding available for ongoing regulatory compliance testing, but there is, the infrastructure law that the federal government recently passed does have a lot of funding for capital projects. So for instance, we've, we, the city, have requested federal funding for the next phase of the Cox Creek Interceptor project. So that, the next phase is an $8 million, 8.4 million project that we're self-funding, and so we've requested some help from the federal government for that. But as far as regulatory compliance.
That was just an example. I don't really, that's such a small number. I'm talking about the holes where there's no pipe left, the things that, you know.
There are federal, so there are a few federal grant programs. So the request we just made for the Cox Creek Interceptor is through the process formerly known as earmarks, which shall never be mentioned again. That's now called congressionally-directed spending. And we sent in applications to our representatives to designate some money for us that would be essentially administered as a grant to us. There are other grant programs for stormwater that could help with some of our needs, and then, but the real funding mechanism for water and sewer infrastructure is the state revolving fund, state revolving loan funds that exist for both clean water and drinking water programs. But those are loans, which are not as great as grants.
Agreed. Grants are better. So am I understanding correctly that you are actually pursuing grants and government assistance to deal with all these things, rather than just, we have no choice, we have to raise the?
Oh, yes. We look for grants or whatever else might be out there as much as we can.
And Chris, we received some recent help from ARPA funding for Cox Creek as well.
Right. So this current phase of ARPA that's being built, or no, this current phase of Cox Creek that's being built this summer, we have designated some of the city's ARPA funding. You may remember, the council approved.
We approved it, yeah.
Paying for part of the Cox Creek project out of that. And that's, you know, I don't want to say free money, but that's not even a grant. It was just money provided to the city. So that's been very helpful.
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, everybody knows, the last thing I want to do is raise rates.
Sure.
And I'm just looking for anything we can possibly do besides raise rates.
I understand.
Because, you know, inflation isn't just for all this, it's for everything. We're all feeling inflation in everything, and I appreciate the presentation. I'm just, you know, wondering.
It's overwhelming.
Yeah.
I understand.
Yeah. And the reason I mentioned the regulatory stuff is because we're always getting things from the state, new regulations, new whatever, and everything is unfunded. It's like, it's just on you, and this is just an additional 14,400, which is a drop in the bucket compared to hundreds of thousands and whatever that you take loans out for, but it just, it.
I need to, can we get to the next counselor? Thank you. Counselor Montague.
First off, I just wanted to say thank you. I can see throughout your whole presentation that you have a very proactive approach, and I could see how, if we didn't take that approach, it could get out of hand pretty quickly. So I really do appreciate that. I was also going to ask you about the PFAS. I saw the article and was curious as to how that would impact us, so thank you for covering that. To Counselor Novak's point, I'm wondering if there's any money available for that specifically because of the extra regulatory stuff that's coming down.
Sure.
So that would be something to look into. On the SDCs for stormwater, that was also going to be my question, so thank you again for covering that. When do you think that's going to come back to us for consideration?
I think August timeframe.
Okay. So fairly soon, that's pretty quick.
Okay.
And.
July, August.
Even quicker.
Rob, tell us.
Okay. And that was all I had, so thank you for the thorough presentation.
Thank you. Counselor McGee.
Well, Counselor Novak kind of covered mine. I was just going to ask you about, were you looking at other ways to be funded besides raising rates, but you kind of talked about that. Any other things outside of that?
Well, it's tough. On the PFAS, that reminded me of another, there's another source of funding through the drinking water program at the state. There was, there are specific categories of money available through the state for, to address emerging contaminants such as PFAS. But that is to provide funds to clean, you know, to treat for PFAS. We aren't, we don't see PFAS in our systems. We haven't detected it at all in the drinking water system, and we have very, very low, very low amounts in wastewater. PFAS comes from lots of things, Teflon coatings, fire retardants, you know. So when you have infant clothing that you wash in your washer, some of the flame retardants come out and go to the wastewater plant. The wastewater plant doesn't generate it, it receives all this stuff. So, but even then, the testing we've done at wastewater is below the proposed limit. So the funding that's available is really for those communities that have to try to treat and remove that contaminant, because it's exceedingly expensive to get PFAS out of your drinking water. You have to have a reverse osmosis system, which is, it would be hundreds of millions of dollars to try to install a system like that. Just the regulatory testing part, there's not really funding for that.
Okay, and you mentioned regulatory testing. Is that like monthly, yearly, quarterly, and then that other one that was $1,200 per test?
Right. That's the PFAS test that we've run in the past. The specifics on the EPA rule haven't come out yet, so I'll put an asterisk on it, but probably it'll be a monthly test on our finished drinking water at each treatment plant for a subset of the PFAS components that they're specifying. And that is the test that cost us $1,200 in the past, but there are a lot more labs that are qualified to do that test now, so the cost might have come down. But that's an expensive chemical to test for, because you're, they're requiring that you test down to the parts per trillion, which only certain labs can do. And that's the one that I was referring to. So we don't know exactly, but it probably will be tens of thousands of dollars in additional testing, monthly, or for monthly tests at each drinking water plant.
So that's twice, okay.
I have one more question. And then how often do you plan to raise these rates, or the last rates in 2017 or 2018, it looked like you said, so how often is this, are we going to be looking at another increase next year, two years, just?
We do this every year.
You're going to raise the rates every year going forward?
Well, we will be back next year to tell you what we feel like we need, and you can tell us if you want to raise the rates by that much or not. The councils, previous councils, I would really like you to take our recommendation and approve it, but I understand that it's not a great situation. Previous councils, we've had discussions about what can you do, you know, can you take a lesser rate increase? And if you want to ask those questions, we can come back to you and talk about what that would mean. Off the top of my head, if you say, we don't want to raise water 4%, we want to raise it 3%, what I will tell you is, we will do 1% worth less capital projects in water. So what we're, the rate that we're proposing is to meet that capital target and the operating target and the debt target. We can't really not pay our debt, and we can't really not operate the system. So when we have less revenue, we just don't do as much capital work. And when we don't do capital work, eventually things fall apart. It's not ideal. So, but you're, it is your decision. I want that to be clear.
No, I just, I kind of feel what Counselor Novak is saying, it's just really expensive. And as somebody who rents on this council, that whole thing about apartment complexes like that, I mean, it's expensive. I mean, it really adds and adds, and if you're thinking about doing this, you know, yearly, that's why I was asking about additional funding, trying to find other funds, being more aggressive in looking at funds that are for the region, for the state, you know, outside of just raising rates. I think it would be proactive to look in advance down the line of what other funding is available outside of just the state.
Sure. Yes.
Go ahead, Counselor Kobsduski.
Just one question, one comment. Are we still doing any type of COVID testing through our system at all?
Oh, yeah, we are still participating in the wastewater surveillance program, so that's not really any of our, any cost to us. Essentially, what happens is we, when we collect samples, we pour off a little bit extra. Oregon State University comes and gets it, and they are participating in this network. So we are getting, it's called sewer sociology, so you, or wastewater surveillance, you can look in your wastewater and see what's happening in your community, and they are still doing that for COVID.
Okay, and then a comment, I'd just like to applaud you and your team, because this is an annual exercise we go through, and I think some folks here could, can remember where we've actually, because of your conservative estimating, we've been able to come up with zero increase, just on your recommendation. So it's not always an increase every single year. It is done conservatively for the good intentions, and that's, I think that's worked out very, very well over time for the city. Thank you.
So I just have a couple of things. One, first of all, great work. Actually, it was very fluid, and it flowed really well, so thank you for that. I did have a question about plastics. I'm reading a lot about plastics in water. I posted something the other day on my Facebook post about plastics showing up in volcanic rock, plastics showing up in soils all around the world. Are we still testing for plastics, and how are we doing with that?
We don't test for microplastics, per se. Every now and then, they'll be, will be approached, someone's doing some research and wants to take one of our samples and then take it off and as part of their research project. But there are microplastics in everything. It's everywhere. It's really interesting and terrible, but we don't sample for that, per se. It's not required by any of our permits, and I'm sure it would be expensive, so we haven't, we haven't done that.
Do we do any filtration at all? I mean.
Well, it gets filtered out, you know. It would be the wastewater plant, it would be highly unlikely that we would have microplastics in our drinking water sources, maybe. But, so at the AM plant, that, those will be filtered out, either through the pre-screening or the ultra membrane filtration. They're so small, the pore sizes, it wouldn't, they wouldn't get through. At the wastewater plant, we're going to receive whatever anybody puts down the pipe, and we do have fine mesh screens, but some of these microplastics are in the micron, you know, size range. Those would probably make it through, but we don't sample for those, so it's hard to say.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation, Director.
Thank you.
So now at, right on time, actually, we're adjourned to executive session to consider current litigation and litigation likely to be filed pursuant to ORS 192.660 subsection 2 subsection H. Representatives of the news media and designated staff and other persons shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other participants must exit. Online audience members will be moved to a waiting room. When the council returns to open session, staff will readmit those remaining in the waiting room to rejoin the meeting. In-person audience members must leave the council chambers and wait in the hallway. When the council returns to open session, staff will open the doors, and you can rejoin the meeting. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state that the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decisions will be made during the executive session. I now recess executive session at 5:25 PM. except to state that the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decisions will be made during the executive session. I now resource, recess executive session at 5:25 PM.
Next on the night's agenda is business from the council. Councilor Novak?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilor McGee?
None for tonight.
Councilor Montague? Councilor Kupczynski?
Yes, in a couple of weeks we've got Easter coming up and our first Friday event, which is a downtown promotion down there, the Easter Bunny will be down at the Carousel. And all day Saturday then, they will be handing out candy as long as we have it left to hand out to all the kiddos and all the freebies. It's, how do I put it politely? It is an absolute zoo down there on Easter when we're handing out candy. And you've got people running around all over the place. It's really herding cats because some folks like to take more than one or two eggs filled with candy. They want to grab a bunch of them. So we have to politely suggest that they put some back so that their peers and other kiddos can have some fun too. So it's a good fun day, so just heads up.
Councilor Smith?
I can't top that, the Easter Bunny. I have nothing.
Councilor Newton?
I have nothing.
I have just one thing. I had the honor and privilege of attending the Corollus, Celebrate Corollus Friday night. And the MC, the executive director, made poke fun at the cities around Corollus. And then he got to me and I had a problem with it. And it was all in good fun, but I called him out and people from Albany gave me a big round of applause. I appreciate that. Other than that, city manager report please.
Thanks. Did you have something? Mayor, you saw Director Bailey's presentation last Thursday. I had a chance to go out with the wastewater collections team and spend the day with them. So I did have a chance to go in the camera truck and see a picture scoping a pipe and see what all that damage looks like when it happens and the roots as they begin to infiltrate stormwater pipes. And then the Vector truck, which that big piece of rock that you saw next to that person's foot was actually, I suspect it was actually sucked out by that Vector truck. And that's a pretty powerful vacuum. But the reason for bringing all this up is I would encourage you, and I know that they would be happy to host you, probably individually if you ever want to go out and take a tour. My afternoon was spent at the treatment facility. And when you see the technology that goes into treating wastewater and you think about how dependent we are upon that as a city, on its success and its continued operation, it really makes you appreciate the training that they go through and the hard work that they put into keeping that system running. So I would encourage you to take a visit out there if you can.
Thank you. I always tell the kids in school, one of the most important jobs the city has is to keep the toilets flushing. And I really didn't mean that. So with that, I will now adjourn the meeting. I will see you all Wednesday night at 6:00 PM right here in Chambers. Thank you all for coming this evening.